So Ted's not sure.
Good morning, we'll go ahead and start the board of supervisors. Meeting here this morning, roll call please.
Grant?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Hall?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
We'll have the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion to approve the agenda received as proposed, you omit it.
So moved second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed same side, motion carries. We're gonna have some fun budget discussions here this morning. Item number two, budget work sessions, discussions considering all aspects of FY twenty six Black Hawk County budget. First, we're gonna hear from General Assistant.
Good morning, Colleen Schipper, General Assistant. First, I just wanted to touch on the purpose slide. The only thing I wanted to point out on that is the statistics. For FY twenty four, we averaged about one hundred and sixty individuals and families that were reaching out for assistance. I look for that to increase, I would say by quite a bit for FY twenty five, just looking at the stats to date so far. And then there's not a lot of changes to report on FY twenty six budget. The overall increases about two point one percent, totaling fifteen thousand ninety five.
Wait just a second.
My salary increase three percent.
Colleen, would you wait just a second? He doesn't have it.
I'm sorry.
No, she, you're just ready to go. You'll be over before.
I see you guys working on your stuff.
You'll be over before we're started.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, you should be good to go.
Okay. So the only increases are three percent increase for the.
Wait a minute. Yeah. You're still looking at the purpose statement, Colleen.
Okay.
Did you not, don't they give it to you?
It's not on there.
No, she didn't have it.
I don't even.
She gets it because of all you.
No, I'm not sure, but look at it to know what I'm showing.
Oh, that's okay, so the purpose statement, you want me to go back over the statistics or you?
Uh, it's up to the board. I was just gonna ask you.
I'll have a question.
Go ahead, yep, go ahead.
In a way, I was just gonna say, would you refresh, you said the statistics, you made the comment about the statistics changing.
Okay, um, on the statistics number for FY twenty four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so in FY twenty four, we are averaging about one hundred and sixty families and individuals requesting assistance. I'm just guessing that the FY twenty five will, I mean, to date, they are increasing, so I'm assuming that number will be a little bit higher.
Any guess at what percentage?
Um.
You have like a year to date that you can, doesn't have to be today, but you can provide us like.
Yeah, I can, yep, I can definitely do that. I just looked at that, but I can't remember. I'll email that out, though, that's not a problem. And then the only increases are my salary and benefits, a three percent increase for the three agencies, and then a three percent increase for the judicial hospital referee.
No, wait a minute, so we figure out, I can't put something up yet, so.
Okay.
We're putting two minutes.
Now we're done.
See, you were all excited about being the first one, now.
I know.
Oh, it's not on at screen now?
I don't know if I can get it on this screen.
Yeah, I should.
I mean, that's, I gotta go find it. See now, it doesn't put it up there, so how do I get it up there?
That means uh.
It is weird. I don't know why it's doing that to us, it's not done this to me before. Let's try this again, I think we're ready, Colleen.
Okay. Third time's a charm, you want me to repeat?
No, no, you can.
Okay. And then, um, besides that, the only other increases are just a small office supply increase of five hundred, and then shelter assistance of twenty-two, and utility assistance of five thousand. Just requesting those increases based on the increasing income guidelines and the trends so far for FY twenty five. Um, Eastside Ministerial Alliance, Jesse Cosby and Operation Threshold still continue to do an outstanding job at doing the intakes. They have about six to seven employees that assist with the distribution on a daily basis, so I'm really proud of that partnership. Haven't had to increase the budget for quite some time, because we had been having a significant surplus at the end of each fiscal year. That's finally really starting to get balanced out. Our budget's pretty much right on target for FY twenty five, I think we're sitting at like forty-nine percent, if I'm correct. I am comfortable with the amounts that I'm requesting for the service dollars and feel that we'll be able to request, or assist all those requesting assistance that meet the policy. And then within the GA budget, there's a budgeted amount for substance abuse committals, that's for judicial hospital referee, attorney fees, sheriff transports and hospital charges. Again, those are all related to substance abuse committals. I've been hearing that all of those are gonna get switched over to the mental health system as of July first. I don't have any solid verification of that, I don't know if Michelle's heard any updates on that. So we went ahead and budgeted forty-two thousand dollars for that. If it flips over, then we don't have to worry about it, but it's just up in the air as far as what's gonna happen with that. And then just budgeting five hundred dollars less for revenues, that's just a hard area to predict. The only revenues that we receive are through the interim assistance program if someone's found eligible for SSI, or if a client reinforces us for past assistance. Just wanna thank Dr. Dickley, sometimes he's here on the same day I am, but. Black Hawk County Medical Examiner, him and I just worked super close on numerous cases for funeral services for individual, individuals, and we just have a good system in place for that. Just wanna thank the board for their continued support of the GA program. The amounts we assist with might not seem like a lot, but it just makes a huge difference in a lot of people's lives, so. Don't know if you have any questions?
You mentioned that before, I know, the cost of living, we kinda tied that to, like I say, our, I guess our cost of, to the cost of living, is that reflected in here?
Um, what we had decided, I think, what, two or three fiscal years, just increase the income guidelines each year to that hundred percent. So that's why I increased the utility and shelter portion just a little bit. So far, it's just working out really well, but we are reaching more people than we were before by far, so. That's been an improvement.
Yeah, we kinda waited too long and kinda got behind.
Very behind, yeah. Questions?
Appreciate it.
Okay, sure.
I'm just wondering, is there a maximum, like a liable number of times that somebody or a family can use assistance or apply?
Three times in a fiscal year, so, yep, and we have a spreadsheet that I keep track of every day and it goes out to the agencies, so.
Keep really close staff on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, it's over? Yeah, I can wait. I'm gonna try to make this work better, we'll see if I succeed. Well, I was gonna say before we moved on to, if you had anything to add to her budget or anything, but I'm guessing not. Well, I would say, Colleen handles a lot of things every week, I sign off on all the bills, so there's a lot of transactions that run through here. And they're relatively small amounts for individuals, so it's a small amount of money that I think Colleen and others would share makes a huge difference in those people's lives. It's a, you know, if you get two hundred dollars rent assistance for a month or two, doesn't necessarily sound like a lot, but if you don't have that two hundred dollars, or it's the difference between groceries, no groceries. It, it makes a big difference to the individuals that we serve, and I think Colleen does a really nice job at handling all the people. Some of them are unhappy about that limit, and she does a really nice job working with them and that, so I think it's good for you to help that. But nothing unusual in her budget or anything to give? No, and as she stated, we're, it's very difficult right now to know what to do with, you know, mental health issues, so. Um, we probably need to leave it in this budget, and, you know, if, I don't think so, but if the state would have more information for us before we certify, we'll change it, but. Um, they have until July first to really get going, and I'm assuming they'll still have a few details to work out after July first.
I personally think that that would be a very good change if that would go over into the mental health, the substance abuse part, because so many of them are duels. And we spend more time trying to figure out right now if county social services should pay or I should pay. So I think it'd be very good to have it all under one, but I have no idea if that will happen or not.
More to come on that, and that's gonna be a theme today. Couple more minutes, here you go, Londo, and we're gonna try and. Just to work smoother.
Well, I'm getting my pleasantries out of the way.
You may.
So, good morning, board, I'm Yolanda Love, this is Director of Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs. Also have me, a special guest, Colonel Polk, who is the Chairman of the Black Hawk County Commission, who voted on our, our budget. We do that around November timeframe, with the help of Michelle, she helps, guides us through that process. And our commission looks over our budget, and we, and we look at some of the other things that are precautionary, the unknowns. John Deere is still laying off, there is veterans who work at John Deere's, in that standpoint, that we look at. When we look at, we look at preceding what could happen in that standpoint to support our veterans. One of the positive things, though, is when we're talking revenue, I know we're gonna bring that up, but the state provides us ten thousand dollars in, in revenue to help with outreach. And then we average about twenty-two thousand dollars in donated funds, which also helps our, our veteran population. So we don't use as much of the county's funding currently, right now, but a lot of that is subject to change, in that standpoint. I will tell you that, I have, like I tell you in the past, and, and here, in this standpoint, Supervisor Hall, I will not say a quote today, in this standpoint, but. We are, I am mindful that they are burying our thirty-ninth president today, President Jimmy Carter, who was a Navy man, in that standpoint. So we're, we're, as a shipmate going to shore, in this standpoint, for me, in that point.
All right, Yolondo, finally ready to roll.
Okay, so. Okay, the only thing I was gonna add to our, our purpose is that, in that, you will see down at the, the bottom, it says contributing about three point four million dollars in monthly federal compensation to our veteran population and surviving spouses. I look back at June of twenty twenty-one, about the same timeframe, it was about two point four million. Uh, so, uh, our veteran population is dwindling down, but the compensation coming in from the VA is going up for our county in that standpoint. And I contribute a lot of that to our staff's proactiveness, is getting out our commission and, and things of that nature. With the help of, even to everyone, you let our veteran staff know that, I mean, our veterans know that they can come into our office to check on those compensation.
What year did you say, Yolondo?
Twenty twenty-one, uh, June, uh, twenty twenty-one, it was two point four million, and currently, right now, it's about three point four million, uh, monthly that comes into our veterans. About two thousand and nine veterans and surviving spouses are receiving compensation monthly. Those numbers go up and those numbers go down based, based off of death rates. Um, and unfortunately, our Vietnam era veterans are, are dying pretty fast, in that standpoint, so we get them. Um, one story is, we'll get a veteran, there's compensation, uh, and two months later, we're burying that veteran, unfortunately, in that standpoint. So that's kinda like where we're at, fiscal year, if you see twenty twenty-three was a very popular year because that's when the PACD Act really was in play and we had a little bit more participation. Now, I think we're back riding our, our, our BAWA eighteen ninety-one, our goal is about two thousand veterans a year, so right now, we're a little bit under each one of those. Uh, then moving on to our budget, uh, if you look at our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, we've been consistent in our budget, and there's no real changes in that. We would like to keep it the same, we're not asking for any increases, uh, because we utilize the revenue that are coming in, whether it's the state allocation or our, uh, the donations from our kind citizens to help offset some of it, in that standpoint, so, again, we don't control a lot of the expenditures. We were without a, a office specialist for six months, uh, in that standpoint, but we now have that job field. So, revenue, uh, you can see that, you can see our expenses, um, our salary and benefits, and our key area is what our general services to veterans. And I looked at where we're at right now and what's going into the future. Um, out of the forty-four thousand dollars that we have, pretty much for general services to veterans, we, we've used about nine thousand dollars of it helping veterans in that standpoint. So, we've been doing a pretty good job, our staff does with taxpayers' money. Our biggest focus is when we're helping a veteran is, we're helping a veteran to, to pick themselves up and not to be dependent on what the county can provide them. Uh, so we're asking, are you, uh, are you gratefully looking for job employment? What can we do to help you get above that, in that standpoint? But for the most part, our budget has been consistent over the years, uh, in that standpoint, and we're just acting that our budget remains the same based off of the, uh, the approval from our commission. Colonel, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I don't, other than, we did, um, we just passed yesterday, um, we increased our, um, our, use of our donated funds to a three hundred percent threshold on the, our re-level. So we'll be able to hopefully use those funds as well in a, in a more prudent and more expeditious manner, because we do have a surplus there. You know, we did take a decrease in our budget last year because of the legislature, the state legislature, on, on some things. We took a what, a twelve, fourteen thousand dollar hit from our previous budgets that we've had. Um, and we're still within our limits and still maintaining, um, and, and being able to, um, service our veterans here in the county, so. If we can maintain that budget, I think we will be able to, to serve our veterans very well in the future.
Set aside, address any questions or decisions.
How many, how many questions do we have currently ballpark and county?
It's, uh, so the ballpark is right around seven thousand two hundred, uh, plus or minus. Um, again, I've participated in a hundred and fifty frontals in the last three years, um, and that's just, um, one service organization out of the five that's in the state. Fuctuate. Uh, Justin, what, what we're challenged with is, we don't have any active duty bases around, and there's no, um, actual wars or, or things are out there right now, so. Our, our veteran population is gonna kinda dwindle down, uh, because all we have are, for the state of Iowa, is, uh, National Guard and reservist bases. And for National Guard or reservists to get the designation as a veteran, they have to do a Title X deployment, which is a federal deployment to a hotspot. So, uh, National Guard or reservist could do twelve years, never deploy, won't get the designation of veteran.
Interesting.
So, that's our challenge, um, but we are servicing the veterans that we do have in our state. Good question.
I just wanna congratulate you on that increase in federal dollars coming into the county. Um, that's huge, not only in their individual lives, but that's also really big economic development for the county as well to have slightly under a half a million dollar budget of property taxes, but be able to leverage that into three point four million of federal dollars is, is really remarkable work.
Right now, it's, it's pretty good to be, Chris, you bring up a good point, it's pretty good to be a veteran right now, but we have also the, the Iowa Trust Fund, uh, just last month, we. The Iowa Trust Fund for the Black Hawk County, uh, distributed out twenty-one thousand dollars to help veterans with home repairs, cars repaired, things that nature. So that also helps in that standpoint, that's not general revenue for us, because the state of Iowa is the one actually paying that. But it's something that veterans can utilize for emergencies, for things like that, so we're, we're promoting that, we're promoting that program also, and it also helps bring down the costs from what the county is responsible for.
Yeah, that increase from twenty twenty-one of a million dollars is, uh, it reflects work, so.
What, one other thing to note is that we're also reaching out to the dependents of our veterans, so if they should pass away, there's a dependent indemnity compensation that they could be eligible for. And that's part of that three point four million plus that we're bringing into the county as well, and I know the staff has, has made that a, a point of effort to reach out to those dependents when a veteran passes, to ensure they get their benefits as well.
You always do a great job of presenting that information in your reports, too, it's great also to see those statistics every. Thank you.
Ever wear a t-shirt?
Do I ever wear a t-shirt?
Yeah. You mow the lawn in that?
So. My third years of serving in the, in the, in the Navy, the Navy said one thing, when you, uh, go before your bosses, you, you put on your best. And so, my, my, my thought, and I carry that, is each time I come before you guys, I want to be, present my best. I do not, I ever wanna make sure that, um, I bring any kind of, um, negative shadow on you. And so, to do that, to, to make sure that I'm coming with my best, make sure that I'm looking out for these guys.
If I drive by your house, see mowed the lawn.
No, thank you.
He's got his other boss, Chiquita, so I get it.
Oh.
Next up, we got the Recorder's Office.
Good morning, board, seen Smith, Recorder. Obviously, my purpose as a recorder is to record real estate documents, and we do a lot of other things such as issue birth, death, marriage records, and sort of, we are a certified passport facility. Obviously, the bulk of our revenue comes from recording of instruments. That is gonna be driven by the economy, if the interest rates are low, if the housing market is booming, obviously, those numbers are gonna trend upward. We've kinda stabilized the last couple of years. One thing I did wanna update you on is the initiative to raise recording fees in Iowa, the draft has been sent to the Senate, so they are still moving forward with that. Obviously, we have not reflected those additional revenues in this budget, but those numbers would be significantly increased. And, um, just in case you don't know, the fees have not been raised for recording in over forty years, so they're really pushing that forward.
Wendy, do you expect at all a timeline here?
You know, they're still shooting for July first, yeah. So everybody's working really hard to get that to real true, so. Um, in looking at the budget for revenues, I do project a slight increase in revenues, and as I just said, it's, a lot of it's based on the economy. The interest rates drop, we're gonna see our recording numbers go up. We did see, it has started to see an increase in the fall, October, November and December, our recording numbers were up a little bit, so we're hoping that continues. A couple of things I wanna note on here, you'll see a decrease in boat fees, that's simply because it's not a boat renewal season, those are every three years. So that's why you see that significant decrease there. Some positives, the electronic image fee and electronic access fees, number five four one seven oh, five four one eight oh, for revenue accounts. Those are new, those are simply because we've updated to the new records management system, so now we can track, we sell subscriptions for our data and our images, so. I'm projecting that we'll see an increase, obviously, in those line items. Switching to expenses, I do show an increase of seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars for operating expenses, and that is due to the, the system that we purchased was fifty-five thousand dollars, and they're allowing us to pay that over the three years, the length of the contract, so. Michelle and I have talked about possibly moving that line item into our records management account, which you'll see also included on there, so we could look at doing that if we needed to. Recorders also have a records management account, um, you'll see there is an attachment for that. One dollar of every document we record goes into a fund that we can use for the preservation of records. So I projected that possibly twenty-six thousand instruments will be recorded, so whatever I put in as a revenue, I try to spend that out as well. So that's where I digitize and do my projects. You'll see that there, I have added some minor furniture in for two line items for five thousand dollars. That is due to the fact that IT is gonna be remodeling my back room and taking my space, so I'm just protecting them. Sorry, but. So I have to create a lot of space in my front office for some of those indexes and those books that I do need to keep, so I'm anticipating getting some storage units for some index books and things like that, so that's why that is there. Can I answer any questions?
I have nothing.
Okay, I'll keep you updated on the initiative to modernize the recording. Thank you very much.
Yeah, great work, thank you.
Thank you.
Forty years, a long time.
Next up, we've got Al with IT.
Morning, board.
Is that you?
That is me. I guess I didn't, I should have.
Oh, I'm sorry, you don't have it.
No.
Doesn't matter, I'll take it.
By the way, I'm not doing this awkward. All right, Al, you IT Director. I feel bad that we don't have as many paragraphs on ours, but we kinda put our admission statement on there, and, uh, next time, I'll make sure I'll include a little more on that, but. Um, just kinda go over what we do. We, you know, I've always said we are a customer service department, we are not a technology department. Our job is to serve everyone in our county who then serves the citizens, and we are very passionate and proud of what we do, and, and we love what we do, so. I've been here for about three years now, and I'm very proud of the work that our team has, has done. I think we've come a long ways with technology in the county, and I still think we have a lot more we can do, um, but I'm, I'm very, uh, very excited about what we can achieve. Um, so some of the statistics, uh, so the, I apologize, I don't have the previous years for the help desk tickets closed. Uh, but notably, right there for that, for FY twenty-five, just so far up to Jan, up to January, we have, we've closed over twelve hundred tickets. Last year, we closed an entire year, just seventeen our tickets, because we added the Sheriff's Department, we've had an influx of, of work orders, so. We're probably projecting that to be over two thousand tickets by the end of the fiscal year, so just to take note of that. Um, and, and most of the other, the statistics are kind of just incremental changes. Uh, network connections is, did drop, and that's because we retired a lot of old equipment, so that's also part of the, the sheriff, uh, adoption, we, we got rid of a lot of antiquated things, so. That's all I have for that part of the activity. All right, so, our budget, um, I will say overall, our budget really hasn't changed a whole lot, it's, it might be kinda boring. Uh, we, we have the, the usual salaries increase, and those are calculated by, by finance. Um, and for operating budget, we actually have a zero percent increase. Um, we did some shuffling, we, we moved some funds from one account to another, and sort of did that last year, too, um, and it's all documented with accounts around here. I do understand that, that there are, we have subscriptions and that some of them do increase in cost annually. We feel that this year, we can, we can, um, kind of take those expenses and, and, and not increase our overall budget, um, by just allocating funds to different areas within our operating budget. Um, I know there's some uncertainty with property tax legislation, so I kinda wanna help the county in general and just try to keep everything status quo. Uh, so I think we, we can operate with, with a zero increase.
Every year, we wish there wasn't so much state interference with our budgets, but there is, so appreciate you.
I know, well.
Taking that in consideration.
And we just don't know, so, I, I mean, I know not, not all departments have, can be in a position to kinda do this, but I feel that, um, us allocating some things internally, we can, we can pull this off, so, you know, that should help. Was there anything else that you have questions for on the budget side?
You know, what's the average lifespan of a lot, I know that probably varies from piece of equipment to piece of equipment, but like, we're, I don't know, desktops, before we change those out?
So general, um, general rule is five years for both computers. Laptops, we generally do not like to have them go over five years, desktops can kinda sometimes stretch to six years. Um, but typically, in general, just think five years, your stuff's old, um, which is kinda sad, but it is what it is, everything's built here.
Is that staggered out then historically for?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and so that's one of the things that, one of, one of the reasons why we can achieve what we're doing now, is because of ARPA, uh, covered a lot of laptops a few years ago. We have to be careful not to just replace it on that fifth year, because we will, we'll get a huge amount. We have to be careful not to just replace it on that fifth year, because we will get a huge amount, so we're just staggering it up, and we're going to kind of retire them early, but we're going to delay that retirement by a year, and that's why we can make this adjustment to the zero operating expense increase.
Excellent.
Yep.
Utilities, you've got a three thousand plus percent.
Yeah, that was.
Just curiosity.
It was in the literal word, so that's really for utilities is our CFU internet bill, and.
And also your.
Yeah, and NSL bill, and so, data communications and utilities are sort of the same thing, but we felt that, that the funds would be better in the category called utilities, so that's why we moved it from data communications to utilities, that's all.
Last year, we want, we thought we wanted it to be separate, so it wouldn't be forgotten about, and then we, and as they paid bills, they kept using utilities, so we decided we'll go back to utilities.
And the bill says Cedar Falls Utilities, so we just kind of went with the word, and that's all, it was kind of, yeah. That was all.
It's just flip-flopping.
Well, definitely, but luckily, the change was right above, lying right above, so, because I was like, you guys might be wondering where that was.
I saw where it was coming from, I just wondered why the change.
Do you have the number, you said ARPA covered a good chunk of the replacement?
Correct. Um, that was a pallet load of laptops, I think that was roughly sixty grand, and one.
Everything that was, I don't know what else is included in that, but that total ARPA project has about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand that we spent there.
Correct. There was, there was other peripherals and things like that within that, so docs and things like that, but the actual laptops themselves, I think they were close to sixty.
But I'm assuming you want to replace peripherals at the same time, right?
What's that?
You would want to replace the peripherals, the docs and stuff every five years as well.
Most, most of those, we kind of, peripherals, we kind of just replace as we go, because we have a set amount of money just kind of set for those things, so. If those are hard to predict, because they may fail one day, they may not. Generally, they'll last longer than laptops themselves.
And that, did that, did that replace the entire fleet? That was the entire fleet.
No, 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 we're, yeah, we do the every five year cycles, so, you know, every year, we're recycling a batch of computers, or we're replacing a cycle of laptops and computers. If the mathers might have to.
If we look at the, the capital.
Yep.
We put it on this worksheet, it will likely get moved to their operations, because individually, they're not significant. But there's twenty-five thousand dollars on here, I think, for twenty twenty-six. They bumped that up to thirty-five thousand in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, and that is our annual replacement of those, so that's how it's getting processed.
And that's, that's a prediction of when they get those.
What ends up happening with the old ones, go to auction, or?
Uh, we recycle them. I guess we can talk about that with board sometime, I've, I'm not opposed to maybe selling them to an auction company, I don't know what, if the Board has any issues with that. Previously, when I was at the schools, they did not like to do that because of a liability scare, they just didn't want to sell a computer that they put down someone else. And no matter how many disclaimers you make them sign, they could probably take, you know, file lawsuits, so, but I'm completely open to. Yes, we can remove the hard drives or wipe them clean, we can, we can make sure all the data is preserved.
Is there much value, I guess by the time we retire them out, I'm thinking two or three, so I just mean, sometimes with the market with people, they want the newest and most inefficient, but I just thought it's there, if there's use for them.
Yeah, because the recycling business is a whole market in itself, and so, most of these companies will try to buy old equipment from you for like eighty to a hundred dollars. And then they'll, in turn, resell it for two to three hundred dollars, so, I mean, that's a good markup for them. So, and I guess we've always just kind of retired things, pulled the hard drives out and just retired them, for public health, we have to do that too, for security purposes and privacy. So, we just made it a habit to do it on all computers, but we certainly can look into that in the future, if you guys would like to, and that could be another source of revenue. We, as a department, we don't have a lot of revenue, we get a fee, we get a monthly fee from the abstract companies to remote access for the tax software, and the assessors give us an annual fee for tech services.
Are we going to get availability, getting those in the hands of nonprofit boys and girls clubs, for instance, or House of Home?
I, I don't have a problem with that, but that, of course, I would love that to be a decision made by the Board, and so, I would not be opposed to that, because I would, I'm an advocate for, you know, because those, a lot of those entities don't have a lot of funds, and it would be great to get some of those in their hands, so, we don't have a problem.
Yeah, my only question.
Talk to her for a discussion for our department.
Yeah, my only question would be for Mike, whatever's, whatever code doesn't prohibit us from doing, is it on the table to explore?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, on our end, we just make sure there's no information left, and then it's presentable.
Decide how we want to do it, or who.
I want to.
There's Mike.
Oh, there's Mike.
I want to make sure I understand what Mr. Brandt's question was, whatever code doesn't prohibit us from doing relative to the budgeting, you mean, or relative to this department specifically?
Yeah, well, just insofar as getting rid of old equipment and finding a, I guess, exploring a revenue stream, or perhaps donating it, like Tava said. As long as we're within code, can we do these things?
Yeah, absolutely, and I can have that conversation with, you know, as we go, I think right now, and Al, you correct me if I'm wrong, but we kind of determine, you know, whether there's a likelihood of a, you know, a profitable secondary market for purposes of the taxpayers, and if there's not, then, then it, then I think it can be, it gets disposed of however is seen fit in a way that's not a sale, is that right, Al?
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
I think we might want to actually auction them, but not necessarily through another party, we could, we could maybe post it to be available to local nonprofits or something like that, and we do need to do some homework about that. But I think if we at least sold it to them, even at square dollar a piece, that, that might be more allowable, if you will, than us choosing which nonprofit gets it.
Few moving parts to explore, I guess, as well, is numbers, and seeing what that would look like for us on an annual basis, or how often we do that, yeah.
That's because of the directive from the county, from the state auditor a few years ago on prohibitive donations, so we can't directly donate.
Yeah, I think.
Or we can enter a contract for service, so enter a contract for service on laptops.
Or if we are auctioning off unneeded equipment, I think that's allowable, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because that's kind of what I was getting to.
If there's value, I agree with Michelle on this, the auction is the, is the most important route to go, or the most appropriate route to go. However, if there is a, you know, if there is a, we think that one of our service contracts is for providing this type of equipment, or that they need it, they need that type of equipment, that could be one way, I suppose, to procure services. I personally think it's a lot cleaner if we, if we simply establish a value, have the value paid for our equipment, and then, and then if we are paying for services from any of these organizations, we do that separately.
You weren't thinking so much of having it for a revenue stream for this year's budget, just as something for a future discussion?
Yes, correct, yeah, well, I know with you and I, you know, they've got public service, public surplus auctions, or I benefited from buying up there before, so, just something like that, whatever.
Any other questions regarding that?
Any other comments about your capital?
Maybe a little more on the capital?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, on the capital, the stuff that was highlighted on there was, was things that we added this, this later session, so, since this was the five years out, we already had the other numbers that were in there. I would like to make note of that very first line item, so that's a subscription for our wireless access point. So, technically, that's, you could call it as a software, but I also consider hardware, because these access points, if you don't pay the subscription, they don't work. So, I kind of see them as tethered together. So, a good surprise, I was actually looking up the subscription end date, which was supposed to be in July nineteenth, coming up here soon, and it's been pushed back a year. So, I would like to formally remove that top request off of there, because I forgot I had that in there, but also, that's a surprise, so that's one less thing we will request for, is that item, and that's, that's four chunks of change. The computer fiber replacement is the normal, I do, I will say, there's a couple of items that I have on here that are kind of like maintenance renewals, they're not technically capital, but Michelle's gracious enough to let me leave them on there, because it helps remind me of things that are coming up, so please note that that is not actually capital. And then, the one item on there is firewalls, so that, that is a, that is for the Sheriff's Office, so that is a significant thing that we need for CEGIS compliance. The, we were initially going to use our main firewall to filter for the sheriffs, and then we discovered that that's not allowable. So, they currently have a, the old firewall, it is not worth fixing or reusing anymore, and it's technically in the life, so in order to stay compliant, we want to make sure that we are putting in place a new firewall. It'll be a smaller one, so it won't be as expensive as the main one we have for the county. Any questions on the, on the firewalls? And that, that is the estimated cost for two firewalls, because you have to have a main and a backup.
Do you know of any nationwide who, that's been breached by hackers or anything?
Oh, like agencies? There's been plenty, we try not to draw attention to them, because I can tell you, there have been many counties in Iowa that have been compromised. It's unfortunate, but a lot of those are smaller counties that have almost no IT, and so, they use like a third-party company, those aren't boots on the ground, they don't know what's going on every day, so, unfortunately, yeah. And it usually goes hand in hand with, you know, no IT presence, no much, but there are some.
It's a good reminder that our elected officials particularly get targeted by phishing scams and stuff, and so, you want to be extra careful.
You know, so, unfortunately, yeah, so be vigilant on that, I'm not asking you for a gift card, so please. It's not really me asking you for an iTunes gift card.
We're not going to pay those.
Do not pay an Amazon iTunes, that's not a legitimate. I do have one item on here that I put, that's county U V keys, so if you remember, as part of a CEGIS mandate, the Sheriff's Department, they had to all have the U V keys, which is these guys right here, as their second factor. I would like to see the rest of the county get those as well, but that's not a, it's more of an ask, and I might be able to pull it off with, if I have funding at the remainder of the year. So, I just kind of left that on there, but that's not really a high priority, but it would be nice to have everyone use the U V key as opposed to a phone.
So, you've got a strong twenty-six thousand.
What's that, I'm sorry?
The twenty-six thousand is a strong, a firm number for your capital, the other is just a.
And then the item that's coming up next.
Oh, all right.
And so, the other item is logging software, this is technically not capital, because it's software, but it is, it is a substantial amount of money, and it is also for CEGIS compliance. So, CEGIS mandates that we log literally everything, and so, we, we currently aren't, we're doing it, but we're not doing a very good job of it. And, and so, if you get a log that's a thousand pages every day, how do you read that log? It's mind-numbing, so, it's the definition depression, so, we would like, we would like some software that can kind of translate that into something more verbose, and that way, it's actually useful for us. So, one of Andrew's jobs is to look at logs, he's taking the logs that we currently have, but they're not in a great format, so it's really time-consuming for him, and it's, yeah, it's not very efficient. So, one of the things we'd like to do is, is get some money towards a logging software that will do this efficiently for us.
Sorry, you said that is not, it's under capital request on our sheet?
Yes.
Is it reflected in here then?
It's not, I, that's, that's part of me doing things wrong by, by putting, so I can, I can change that later, it's technically not capital, because it's software, but.
So, then that'll go to?
That would go to.
Software zero five five three?
Correct, yeah, so, sorry about that, I can change that later, it's just a habit of me putting all these reminders on here, so, yeah.
And kind of draws attention to them for you to choose if you want to fund them or not, I guess, so, we will correct that at some point.
That one is a CEGIS requirement, you said?
Yes.
Do you just have any funding?
Yeah.
To assist?
Of course not.
Unfunded mandate, does that?
The feds tell you what to do, but don't help you at all on how to achieve, kind of frustrating, so. Yeah. All right, any other questions on the items that we?
So, you reduced your capital request by forty thousand, forty-five, I mean.
It was good, it was good.
Great, great.
It was a good surprise to see, so, I, they did it, I don't know, whatever, I'll take it, so.
I think you just left it in there to soften us up.
No, I did hear him trying to talk, I bought it this morning, so I think he was.
I forgot that I had it on there, and I saw, I actually saw it the other day, but I forgot I left it on there, and it was already sent to you guys, so.
Yeah.
That's good news. Anything else? Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate the support that the Board gives our department, and we'll continue to do the best we can in service.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, mental health patient advocate.
Kind of hoping Jackie could join us today, maybe she has not done that before, because she had appointments, she couldn't. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about mental health patient advocate, that is required by the Code of Iowa, the county does provide it, and they are appointed by the court system to represent individuals who have been involuntarily. So, not an easy job, but Jackie handles a lot of appointments. Currently, under the last round of state reorganizations, they decided that a hundred percent of the cost of that physician would be reimbursed by what are called the mental health regions today. Our, in particular, is called county social services. We do not have information yet really on how this is going to be affected by the new round of behavioral health reorganization that will be effective July first. It, the, I read the bill itself says that whatever new entity is appointed to supervise them will provide that. It does say that counties may request reimbursement, that's all it says. So, I am hoping that means we will be allowed to request a hundred percent reimbursement, just the same as has been done before, but we, we just won't know that for a while yet, so. I have done that budget, assuming the same, the same as prior years, so when you get to the bottom, you see net property tax of zero, because we're, the assumption is that they will continue that commitment and will pay for that. So, this is the cost of one employee and training, office supplies, mileage, and a cell phone, and that, that is currently all we are providing. She pretty much works from home and is providing those kind of things herself, so.
What she meets with people, where does she meet with the individuals, at Pinecrest?
I don't believe any of them are there, she, because they're, if they're committed, she's going to the facility they're in. She does, I believe, have to go to court sometimes, I know she has traveled to Cherokee and some other places, it just depends on what happens. We also provide this service particularly for Rundy County, so she does have to travel for that.
So, there could be changes to this position too, as much as anything else with county social services for.
Yeah, it's, it's a hard time for all the staff working in that county social services, and how it filters out to us, we just don't know yet. And those are all the things we have ready to talk with you about today. We have two departments, I believe, that will be ready for some on Tuesday, and Shawalter is handling one of those, or actually, it's kind of three, because auditors have elections. Yeah, just other elections as well.
Sorry, it just go out of my head. Oh, okay, I thought you were going to say.
Well, I was going to until it fled my old brain.
I guess, I thought you said three. How you said three?
I did, I did.
There is one other.
So we have.
That they are ready and you're ready.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll be ready.
Yeah, I think, I think both of those are. I just.
Any thoughts or ideas about Thursday? Or, or if, or whatever day that still works for us, though.
Oh, no, Thursday, we're not.
Thursday, we're not, because of your, yeah, it's, so it'd have to be another day or if we had.
I can, I can watch later that evening, I'll be in Des Moines.
Honestly, I think.
Who keeps the ball rolling?
We've already kind of, I've, you know, communicating with departments yesterday, not doing it on Thursday. And I think at this point, I'm not sure we even need to meet on a Friday, I think we can shoot for potential, well, obviously Tuesday, the twenty-first, and as that gets closer, we can decide if you want to meet again on Wednesday, the twenty-second, because that was another date that you had committed to. And then after that, there's the Tuesday, Thursday of the following week. So I think that will probably work for all our internal departments.
Did that work, you, you were kind of, some different things going on, didn't you?
I don't, thirtieth is a really difficult day for me, but.
Oh, I guess I didn't hear that last night.
Okay. Yeah, and I thought, and I know we've always been used to doing it in the mornings, I guess there's, there's afternoons that work better or something too that works for.
I've got my own strategic plan in the thirtieth, so it's like.
No, I don't mean that, I just mean some of these days when we start looking at it, and they don't always have to be at nine o'clock, it could be whatever, if we can get a couple hours and shake out a couple of things too.
Sorry, I've just been a little bit.
Michelle, if I have questions pertaining to the mental health patient advocate, should I just find Jackie and discuss with her later?
Like what her services are or?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the whole thing in general, and I don't want to spend a bunch of time taking away from everybody, anybody else, if they already know about it. But I'm just curious to learn more.
I think that'd be fine.
Okay.
And I can get to her number, I don't have it right now, but I can get your number.
Fourteenth, we'll have elections, auditor at a department to be named later.
Yes.
I was looking at my email and then Al told me I'm sharing that with the whole world, it's like. Okay, well.
It was all Karen Showalter.
It actually was, you can tell we've been working.
Is that, is not one of the large ones, I assume?
No. It's just stupid, but I'd have to go look in my office.
Okay, and then we don't have any, we won't have a Thursday session?
There will not be a Thursday session and, um, unless you really want, I don't know, I didn't, I don't have many people from the department head side that are available for the seventeenth, I do know Caitlin, that department would be willing to go on the seventeenth if you would like, I don't know that I have anyone else that has committed to being available that day.
We can kind of keep a night, uh, look at the agendas too, when we see those agendas are pretty light, we could do several on Tuesdays, would be probably helpful on that Tuesday, following Tuesday, I mean, but. Not just leave a week where we don't do any. This is the easy part, going through on the first.
You know, where it is, but, um, scheduling everything is.
Not for staff.
Getting all you and all them all at the same place at the same time is not always so easy.
Well, we will plan to meet on fourteenth, obviously, with a regular meeting. Um, but we can determine at that point if we need to do a Friday session, or if we can wait until the following Tuesday. And then start to get back into it.
Yeah, we're just gonna, yeah, if only one is ready on Friday anyway, I would.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah. Cause hers, she thinks it'll be a half hour, so if, for example, let's say conservation is available that Friday, they may be fifteen, I'm going to say twenty minutes to a half hour as well, so that'd be an hour, would you feel that is worth your time to spend an hour on the seventeenth? Or would you not want to come in for an hour? That's the question.
I'd rather have two hours worth.
Yeah, I want two hours too.
I like to really feel like we're making some progress. Yeah, we're doing them just one day and a couple.
Okay, I'll, I'll see what we can do.
Alright, what's that? You want to move into a jar?
Second.
All favor say.
Alright.
Same time.